We'll go ahead and bring the council meeting to order. First, I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, can you please do your roll call?
Craig O'Shaughnessy.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Surt.
Here.
Were you guys all given a chance to read the minutes from the January 5th meeting?
Yes, make a motion, accept them as emailed.
I'll second them.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, first matter of business, Jeremy. Uh, the ADA program review.
Yeah, this is real quick, this is our annual ADA, um, review. We've had it do this since 2012 when we initiated our transition plan. In our transition plan, it states that we would upgrade at least minimum of 16, uh, per grant per year. As you can see, there is 16 locations on here, you know, different corners, um, some are one, some are four. Uh, we did have one request, and that was at, uh, Zion Church Christ at Third and, um, Jackson. That was documented, could be in my file for three years. And that request's completed, so.
Okay.
So, we're going the right direction, as you can see. We'll probably, next year, I'll probably change some of these and actually combine the red and the yellow together, uh, as much as the standards have changed over the last several years. Some of these locations are getting really difficult. I say this every year, uh, due to the deteriorating sidewalks at some point, to be able to meet our minimum requirement. We'll have to get creative on, you know, some sidewalk projects, which we have been, and keep that going to be able to maintain our minimum requirement. We're getting there.
Yeah, there's been a bunch of muckering, definitely.
And this came about because, uh, through the indoc, but basically we had to put together a plan and start showing that we're complying with it, otherwise we lose our eligibility for grant funds at the federal level, so.
If, if you didn't do this, and you didn't do many other things that, that I do behind the scenes, um, you would not be eligible, or you would be disqualified from like the High Points Project, Community Crossings Projects, stuff like that, so. It's just some of the behind the scenes that I've taken care of since 2012 to make sure that when we have an opportunity to get some money, we can, we can get it, and stay in good graces with Federal Highway and the indoc.
And it also is beneficial to those who are handicapped and need, need access.
It, it's more beneficial to the citizens with limited mobility than to us and indoc and everyone else, so. We appreciate you staying on top of this, but thank you.
And, uh, if people have concerns about corners, um.
They can contact me directly.
Contact you or go to the website on the door quarter thing, or would you just contact you?
Contact me directly because there's paperwork that has to be filed within so many, within so many days. It has to be reviewed, we have to visit the site, and come up with a plan of action within so many days, and then the work actually has to be completed then, so.
Okay.
I prefer to be contacted directly, so there's no lapse in time.
Okay.
Contact my office, uh, my email, uh, it's all right there on those papers, so.
Do you want to, many hats that Jeremy wears as ADA coordinator?
Yeah, and Tim, luckily, and Tim and I talk about this about every year, you know, we were the, I think, the actual, the first one.
I think it was the first one.
To, to have the plan adopted. A lot of them started asking questions when we were two or three years into it, and a lot of the communities that should have had it, didn't.
Yeah.
But they, they were working on it, so we just stayed on top of it, tried to stay ahead of us.
All right, well, thanks for keeping up with it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have a couple people from the Main Street Design Team, I believe. Gonna talk about the facade program, which has been a great program for a number of years now for the downtown.
Hi, I'm Max, I'm on the design team for Main Street, this is Rich Wyland, he's also on the thing, on the, uh, committee. Each year, you know, they've done this for five years, this will be the sixth year for it, and, but this year, we kinda wanted to go through and look over the application, since it is, originally it was done for five, and then we added it for one more year. Just to clean it up a little bit, and really get some of that, um, opinion out of it whenever. So, I mean, we looked it all over, we changed a few things in the application, but not really, it was really more to clean it up, whoever was repetitive, we just cleaned it up a little bit. And then the criteria at the scoring is kinda what we changed, is the main thing that we had changed, it was just so it was more straightforward, and it wasn't the committee who judges the, um, each of the applications. You can pretty much already figure out yourself what your score's gonna be, because it's pretty much in black and white, you know, if you do this, you get this point, if you do that, you lose these points, those kind of things. Trying to make it a lot more easier, and not so opinionated, and not so anybody, you know, can criticize, because, you know, why do you guys have this opinion or that opinion? Because they don't agree, because it's pretty much in black and white. So we did send this out, I do, I know I got an email from Phyllis today, we did send out the wrong application for the, um, not application.
The contract.
The contract, which we did call Phyllis at our last meeting, asked her to come to make sure the contract was good, because we just changed it last year, and, um, but she does like what we had last year, so we didn't change anything in the contract, so that would be all, really would get Phyllis' total advice on that one. So she wants to keep it as it has been, but the ones you guys got was the wrong one, but I think she sent out the ones that we did use last year. We did, um, take this, we sent it to, um, the Main Street Board through the email, because we tried to get this done, because we need to get moving on this. I know they have a meeting this week, but we need to get this moving, because they have, um, we wanna get the rollout, and, because contractors, I can tell you, from experience, are really tough scum by, and if the contract does try to, you need to get this done by the end of the year, so we need to get, get it moving, and like I said, we didn't really change a lot within it, so we didn't think it was that big. We sent it out to the Main Street Board and asked, you know, them to, you know, come back. I did get one, a couple people did send an email back, one said, look, fine, the other one said she had a couple questions, that she's actually on our committee, which wasn't just, just trying to explain a little bit of it. Otherwise, you know, I didn't hear anything back from them, so we bring it tonight, so that you guys can look at it over, um, you guys had a chance to look it over, so that you could go ahead and approve it, so that we can keep moving on it, because we'd like to get the rollout on Tuesday, the 26th of this month, and have the meeting, invite everybody from the downtown, or who'd be interested in doing this, and then have the application deadline by March 1st, so we can get them going on it.
So just for the, for the media right now, um, where the facade program works, you can ask for, the city will pay for half, if you're awarded the grant, they'll pay for half of your work, up to, is it 15,000?
15,000, right, parcel.
Right, okay. And I think the city put up, was it 50,000 that's in there every year?
50,000 each year, yeah.
Okay.
It's been a great program every year, I mean, we pretty much gave away all the money, and then one year we did pull over because one backed down, but, yeah, and if you look downtown, you can see it's made a big difference.
Yeah, it has, I mean, that's, one thing I always say, as consultants and engineering firms coming to town, they, they really keep talking about how great our downtown's improving. It's, it's been a great program.
Just this week, I had a client with stores, said, "How nice downtown Decatur's looking", and then she picked on her small town in Ohio, and how they're not, and people notice.
I had a close one, a Portland couple, and they said the exact same thing, they hadn't been in Decatur in a long time, and they were shocked at what a nice community it was, so.
People do notice.
Yep.
So, the changes, and I, I've sat in a couple of their design committee meetings, mainly, as Max said, the changes are basically to take the, make the choices not so subjective. Um, you, you do these things, and you get granted with, by numbers on those, on those things you do, rather than let opinion come in, it's more objective, so you know what you need to do to score points.
As I was reading through the contract, Max, uh, is it, uh, who's the, who's the one that inspects it? I noticed that if they, if they don't get it prior inspected to meet the qualifications of the contract, is that Kurt Whitty that does that, or is it the, you guys on the Main Street Committee?
I mean, we go through, and we score them on those things, and suggest on who does, but Kurt looks over and makes sure everything's up to code, and everything gets done, you know, the way the city, and makes sure everything fits the criteria.
Okay, 'cause I said, I saw something in the contract, that if, if it wasn't approved prior to them, uh, putting on the exterior cover, whatever, that, uh, they would have to remove it to put it, to make sure, for inspection. I just was wondering, is that you, or is it Kurt Whitty that takes care of that?
That'd be Kurt.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I, I think it's been something, and I, we appreciate the time that the, uh, Main Street Committee has put into improving our downtown, I think it's been a great program, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, and I know that you said there's some people on Main Street's Committee that, that had some questions, and I know you have an 8:15 meeting Thursday morning, uh, so I would make a motion that, that council approves, uh, this when Phyllis receives the, uh, notes or secretarial, what do we call that? The minutes, the minutes from Thursday's meeting, which I believe Kelly Eringer is the secretary, and she puts those out pretty quick, so, that's a motion I would make that, that we go ahead, I've reviewed the contract, I think everything's great, and we appreciate your time, but I think also, board approval, we ask, we wanna make sure that we follow the, the protocol of the board to make the suggestion to Main Street, so I would say, I would make a, a motion that, with approval from the board, and Phyllis seeing the minutes, that we allow this to be, to carry on.
I second that.
Anton, did you guys have any issues with people getting completed their project this year because of the coronavirus?
Or the Phyllis?
Did we have any issues with anybody completing their project in 2020?
No, they're all done, they were all, yeah.
So I'm motioning on the table to, um, accept, uh, the, the contract and the grading system as is, with the, the board approval from Main Street this week, and Phyllis to look over the minutes.
I second it.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay?
Thank you, Phyllis, for your work on this.
Thank you, guys. Colton, how you doing?
Good, how are you, man?
Good.
Let me pass a few things out here. Thank you, sir.
And these are just materials that, um, were advanced to you prior to print offs, obviously have, although it's not so full, you don't think that's a claim, that's a lot of paper. So there are a, a couple things, um, I guess, first and foremost, Colton Lickle with the Adams County EDC, in case you weren't aware, uh, there are a couple things I wanted to discuss tonight, in the folder that I gave you, um, the first thing I'm gonna go over is what's on the left side, it's the EDC success sheet, so I'll go over that first. And really what I wanted to do, um, and I was gonna do this at the last council meeting, but then realized I was coming here for the merit report, so didn't wanna come and, and do two reports. So doubled up, the, the first thing I wanted to discuss was just kind of the success of the EDC 2020, looking hindsight, and then provide, um, a few of the priorities of the EDC as we look into 2021. 2020 was an interesting year for the EDC, um, projects remained strong, but also it was just kind of a, a weird year. And what we really wanted to do, um, was really flesh out who we were, who are we at the EDC, what service are we providing, and what value do we bring, we bring to the community? And so what we did is we went through a strategic, um, planning process, where we did a board retreat, but really we wanted to identify, uh, who we were, so we started kinda fleshing it out via three words, collaborate, cultivate, advocate. So those are the kind of three pillars that we want to be great at, we wanna be great at collaborating, collaborating with different communities, collaborating with different organizations, and being a beacon for that collaboration and bringing people together. We wanna cultivate, we wanna cultivate the resources we have, from an economic development standpoint, promote community growth, we wanna cultivate growth in Adams County, and then we wanna advocate for Adams County, both internally and externally. We wanna be a great voice for Adams County, um, and really be a marketing piece, as we, not only for those attraction-type projects that, you know, are the traditional economic development things, but a lot of things, advocate for talent attraction, or for other resources or organizations to come to Adams County as well, so. Uh, we did create a vision and mission, something that we had never had for the EDC, that's written down there, um, so the, the mission, I'll just read that one, "We aspire daily to collaborate in building an economically strong Adams County, unify to cultivate opportunities to enhance, develop, invest, and advocate value for the people, the communities, and the county." So if that's kind of our mission as we move into 2021, kind of refocus, this is what we wanna be good at as we move forward. So I wanted to share that with you, and then going into some of the 2020 successes, um, again, it was kind of a weird year, but we were able to respond to 36 leads that the state sent out, uh, for attraction projects. I would say probably 80% of those were from the city of Decatur, um, you had two different buildings and a site, really two sites, one is more commercial than industrial, but two sites that we have up on our website, um, and so, did respond to 36 leads, the majority of those, again, we had four buildings and two sites, one of which is the certified food processing site here in Decatur. From a retention standpoint, company contacts, communication was a huge piece in 2020, especially as the, the pandemic hit, making sure that we were communicating with existing industry, their needs, um, the immediate needs, the long-term needs, and what they were dealing with, um, was important for us, so we communicated with them, I think, very well. We did create a webpage on our Facebook, that was kind of a purely COVID, you go to our webpage, click on that, you find all your resources, from PPP loans, Small Business Administration, to the resources we had available, what the county had available, and so on. Did work on a few expansion projects in 2020, so that was exciting to see despite the pandemic. Saw 11.9 million dollars worth of expansion efforts that retained 130 jobs and created about 70 additional. Those are just the larger ones that we're aware of, I'm sure, I mean, most industries are expanding, you know, maybe they buy a smaller piece of equipment, things like that, that we may not be aware of, I'm sure that happened as well. We did have some drive-through hiring events, as you know, workforce is a huge issue right now. Worked with four different industries, uh, here in Decatur actually, uh, and, and hosted three different drive-through job fairs, um, at the Merit Center, there, people were able to pull in, do a quick screen, and then set up a follow-up interview with these industries. Was really successful, really helped Rev, um, they were the main participant in two of those, um, and I think it really helped them. RLF program, we began a new marketing effort, um, that had kind of stalled a little bit, our RLF program, which is kind of a big piece of what we do, so we began a new marketing effort, put some new brokers together, um, and that really paid off, I think, um, as we look back at the year, we are able to develop four different loans in 2020. Uh, I will say, two of those, or really three of those, closed in January of 2021, we've got two more we're gonna be closing soon, but to the tune of $345,000. And so, that was all developed in 2020, so we were excited for that. And then, as you know, the EDC partnered with the foundation on a disaster relief grant slash loan program, where we were able to extend to really those sole proprietorships, those hairdressers, the massage therapists, those people who maybe they're just renting a chair at a hair salon, didn't qualify for, you know, the PPP program, some of those larger resources. Total funding, 50,000 from the foundation, and Craig, I believe it was around 2,000 to 3,000, that, that was at a drive-in event, um, that was, was a part of that program that we threw into that as well. Today, was able to extend 49,700 dollars to Adams County businesses for disaster relief, so we, we counted that as a big success, success as well. Some of the other things, $20,000 mural was installed in Geneva, that was exciting. Uh, we developed an early learning coalition, um, this is something that I thought was important, really from a workforce perspective. Unemployment rate has been historically low, except for, you know, April and May of, of 2020, other than that, we're hovering around that 3, 3% mark, which is essentially full employment, so, what are those barriers that are keeping that, the, the rest of those individuals from working? Childcare, early learning is a big piece of that, and so, we didn't have a, an early learning coalition or a group looking at that in Adams County, so we developed that, had our first meeting in December, have another meeting coming up soon. And we're partnering with the foundation, United Way, um, some existing providers in the industry as well, to make sure that their voice is heard in, in that, and we did send out a survey in the October, November timeframe, to really gauge with the industry, what are their needs from a childcare perspective? So excited about that. The, the state of Indiana ranks very low nationally in childcare, and Adams County doesn't rank very well in the state of Indiana, so we're kind of at the very bottom of the totem pole, so we wanna begin to make some movement within that. And then, of course, the Merit Center, which we'll talk about in a little bit, we'll continue to develop that. And then we did do a strategic planning process, like I mentioned, with the EDC board, we had a board retreat day at AB Cinema back in September, where we really went through and said, "What are our priorities moving forward, and what does this look like for us?" So those were some of the 2020 highlights, um, but then as 2021 gets started, from a traction standpoint, we're always gonna submit leads as they come out and they fit the sites and buildings we have. We are, uh, the Redevelopment Commission has commissioned a study of industrial park, that starts, uh, this week, we're having our first call to get that started, hired a consulting firm via the Redevelopment Commission for Decatur. Enhanced marketing, uh, we do have a drone video of the certified food processing site out by Walmart that is completed, I'm just waiting for AEP, who funded that, to give me the okay to begin sharing it, but the, the video is done, and I think it's a really, really cool video that highlights that site. Retention, always gonna assist with expansion projects, be communication with existing industry, make sure they stay here, and of course, work continues to be a big issue, so we'll continue working that. Some of the other things that were identified via our strategic, uh, board retreat, broadband being a big issue, uh, if people, uh, work remotely, kids are learning remotely, we need to make sure we have the services available to them to be able to do that, so, um, have created a committee to look at that, Mayor Dan is a part of that committee. Another thing is Amish engagement, um, I know it's not as important here in Decatur, but it is important, um, because they're potential workforce for the industries that are here in Decatur, so, creating an Amish engagement committee, truly begin what role do they play in Adams County, they're an increasing population, they should be a part of the conversation, in my opinion, but what does that look like? So beginning that, um, have started a committee, um, and have met for that. Another thing, uh, we talked about was county-wide comprehensive planning, I think each community has had a comprehensive plan at some point, but I think Decatur's is probably the newest one, at 10 years old or 11 years old now, um, and so, there's, there's a need for comprehensive planning, uh, I think countywide, to really make sure everybody's on the same page, we're all using the same language, that we can move forward together, and have a common goal, you know, one thing that we have to do, the EDC, is really think regionally, um, how does a factory going into Wells County affect Adams County, or how do things in, in Ohio affect us, and vice versa, and, and I think we need to do that as a county, right? How do things in Decatur affect Burn, and how do things in Burn affect Geneva, and vice versa? So getting everybody on the same page, I think, is, is important, so, we'll begin to explore and have those conversations, of what that may look like. Again, the Merit Center is something we'll continue to work on, and then the EDC itself, uh, we plan to go through a rebrand, um, our logo, our website, they're pretty old, um, and so we want to freshen that up a little bit, we set aside some funding to do that, so that is something that we'll do in, in 2021 as well. And then from a personal perspective, again, we're already engaged regionally, um, but, and, and I'm engaged from a statewide perspective, being a part of the Indiana Economic Development Association, I'm a member, but I've been asked in 2021 to be a board member for the state association, and so that started in January, that's a three-year term, um, so honored, humbled to be, to be asked to do that, um, by, by my peers at the state level, so excited to, to be a part of that. So, that's kind of a very quick, I know it's a lot of information, 2020 rewind, and then looking into 2021, be happy to answer any questions that you may have about, uh, that document. And certainly if things do come up after a meeting, feel free to reach out. I put my cards, um, each of you should have my contact information, but I put my card in that folder as well for you.
Very impressive.
Congratulations for being selected on the Indiana Board.
Thank you, it's, uh, I, I counted it a great honor to give, to serve other Lidos at the state level, so. Okay, seeing no questions, I'll move on to the right side of the folder, which is the Merit Center. The city of Decatur, better than any of the other municipalities, and I'm going around to each municipality to give this, um, we'll call it a presentation, know the Merit Center is better than any of the others, just because of your involvement. So I won't go into too much detail, um, I have provided for you, just so you know, there's kind of an overview document I put together, that goes through the history, the purpose, the plan, um, and then some funding, and then I also provided for you, um, we did a building assessment, um, via the Redevelopment Commission, we sought funds from them to do a building assessment of the, um, we'll, we'll call it the Northwest, as we turned it into merit, um, and so I provided you just a PowerPoint presentation that kinda goes through the different highlights of that, but what I wanna do is just kinda go through a few key items, again, this was sent in advance, if you have questions, um, you can stop me in between, or, or ask them afterwards, or even in the coming days, if they may come up. But, again, the history, you know, um, the purpose, really the purpose remains the same, you kinda have four pillars that we're working with, um, for us, it's industrial, right? That's a big proponent, making sure we have the capacity to provide to our industrial businesses, that maybe the training that they need, the educational opportunities. Adult education, uh, we don't have any opportunities for adults in Adams County to, um, maybe go back and change their career path, uh, upskill, so we wanna provide that, adult education. I think there's gotta be a student component to some extent, um, that can be anything from high school to Lego camp, robotic camp in the summer, we've talked about that in Shrine before, um, so it can be various different ages, when I say students, really it's K-12. And then, community resources, is there really opportunity to provide community resources at the Merit Center? Some of the justification of that, again, I mentioned the work, the, the unemployment rate for us, from an industry training need standpoint, unemployment rate, 2019, our average unemployment rate was 2.7%, that is beyond full employment, and so, again, that's a big, if, if we're gonna find employees, um, if industries need different skills, we've gotta be able to do that here, and train maybe the, the people we have, um, to skill up, and so, that's kind of the justification there, as well as there are justifications for the other three items as well. The current plan, 55,000 square foot, um, it's a lot of building, um, but that's also a lot of opportunity, right? So the current uses of that, I just wanted to mention real quick, office space, as you know, the Bone Center is leasing space right now, they just expanded to another room, so they're occupying two different rooms, we think that's great, we would like to see more of that, we've got plenty of space for office, uh, large gym space, um, as you know, and I, and I thank the council for extending the funds to help that volleyball group put the sleeves in, in the floor, so that they could utilize that, that is very much appreciated, I know that they've already started using it, um, and, and appreciate the services, and then, we did house the EMS, uh, for a short period during the pandemic, um, when they were using their facility for another purpose. So those are some of the current uses, but as we look to 2021, um, and really this is where we dive into that building assessment, um, we tried to identify what uses make sense for 55,000 square feet, um, what uses make sense from a revenue standpoint, um, you know, if you look at just adult education, that's very cyclical, right? When the economy's doing really well, people probably aren't going back and seeking different career paths or training, because they're working, um, and so that's not really sustainable from a revenue standpoint. So, so what is sustainable, where can we find revenue sources? So again, um, the number one thing that we're trying to do is educational space, um, we'll continue to try to do that, office space, lease space is a big one, because that is a revenue generation. You look at an innovation, entrepreneurship maker-type space, a space where entrepreneurs can go in, have the space to either build something, or just to do their emails, or the business type work, or seek guidance, um, from professionals, so, that space has been built into the building. So that space has been built into the building. And early learning, as I said, that's kind of a big piece for the EDC right now, daycare operation, that's another proponent. An event center, we've got a large gym that could be utilized as an event center, and then a commercial kitchen to go along with that. And that can be leased out to, you know, I'm working with a RLF application right now that is a food truck, right? And so if he needs more capacity to be able to cook his food and he can't do it in a truck, that may be an opportunity for him to lease out some of that commercial kitchen space, and it also helps with the event center. And then there's always the potential for additional uses depending upon the need, right? We're looking at the needs of the community and figuring out how do we utilize that. So as different needs come up, the building is flexible to be able to do that, we hope. So with that, we did create, and I should have mentioned this in the beginning, we were able to obtain a 501(c)(3) status for this facility. There was a local organization that we repurposed for us. We have created a Merit Center board, so it does have a board of directors overseeing this 501(c)(3). But ultimately, as you know, you own the building. So any of the work that is in this building assessment, if we were to do any of it, it would have to be approved by this council before any of it was done. And we can't do that on our own seeing that you own the building. So did want to mention that. And the board, the Merit Center board, has reviewed this plan, obviously. They were the first ones to see it. And they've given us, given me approval to go out and begin to speak with the municipalities. I will say, I don't know that they've given me complete, or given us complete approval over every aspect of this, but they're supportive of the effort in what it looks like at this point to be able to go out and have these conversations. So wanted to mention that. So with that, looking at this PowerPoint, the purpose of the building assessment that we went through is we were kind of nickel and diming different things, if you remember, right? We were looking at, well, how much does the door system cost? How much does security system cost in the mat? Where with this, we said, well, why don't we just do a full assessment that looks at everything and we don't have to nickel and dime and get a bunch of people in here? We can have one group come in. So we had them come in, do a building assessment. The team was Fetter's Construction, and they partnered with Martin Riley Architects and Engineers to look at this both inside and outside of the building. As you go through, there are certainly different renderings that you can look at. In the interest of time, I won't go through every single one of those. But you can see there are some pretty drastic changes to the building, both interior and exterior. But what I'll do is we'll skip to the back to page 10. And at the top of page 10, there are kind of two documents there, one of which is kind of a layout of the building. And so from a directional standpoint, we're looking at that layout, and the top of that is north. So that's the north side of the building where the current main entrance is. So just to kind of go over what some of this looks like, if you look at the west side of that, that's going to be more your services, where you can have that opportunity. And then the east side, with the longer hallway, are going to be more of your educational opportunities. So you've got some vocational things down at the very north or southeast corner. As you head up that hallway, there's a makerspace there. And I know this is small, that's why I sent it in advance so you can look at it, but some makerspace and leasing options there. And as you turn around, that's all education as you get up to that main hallway that runs east-west. Where the existing library is would be a new common space area with an overhead garage door that would open up to a outdoor seating area. So we are excited about that. That would really be a big change for this building because you're blowing out a wall, you're adding your garage door, you're really making some changes. And you can see those renderings within. And then you have the existing gym space, you can see a bunch of little tables there. That would be used as, not only gym space, the volleyball team using that as practice, but it can also be used for a wedding reception. It can be used for an annual meeting of the chamber or the EDC or whatever it is. That space could be rented out. And if you're familiar with the Northwest School where the offices are and the main entrance is, that would become a delivery entrance, the main entrance, the existing main entrance would become a delivery entrance, and then the office area would become that commercial kitchen. So it's right next to the event center. And the reason for those big changes, I will say, is the daycare component. So if we're going to have daycare services out there, we had to find a way to keep the adults away from the kids, right? You have to have that physical barrier there where you can't commingle. But we wanted to be able to utilize a kitchen space for adults for those commercial or even educational type opportunities. So that's why that big change happened. So you have the main entrance changing. It will go where the existing cafeteria is now, and it makes sense because you're right off the parking lot. The parking lot is on the west side. To go to the main entrance, or, yeah, the west side, to go to the main entrance now, you have to park there, walk over to the main entrance. That's the biggest change, as well as the common area there for the library. And then at the very southwest side, you have the daycare area. They would have their own separate entrance. You would have a cover of the walkway along the back of the building, the south side of the building, to get to the educational piece is a separate entrance as well. So those are kind of the building changes at this point. That's where it stands. The total cost for that, as you can see, is about 6.5, which is a big number. And so with that, wanted to jump back over to the other document where we can discuss the funding. You know, when you look at all these changes, it certainly begs that question of how are you going to pay for it? That's a big number, and certainly bigger than, I think, and Wiley could probably attest to this, bigger than what we initially anticipated. I think when we first set out, we didn't realize that it would be this big of a change. But I also think, looking at this, what a game changer this could be for the community, to have a facility like this that really enhances that educational piece. Funding wise, certainly grants, that is going to be our primary funding source. I have two meetings tomorrow about two different grant opportunities, one of which would be is an EDA grant that would be, I would say, a large grant if we can get it. There's another community who did a similar grant for a similar type of facility. So we're encouraged by that. I don't want to comment on the number because I just don't know. Rather, I don't want to promise something when I've not had the conversation yet, but it would be a larger, significant grant. There's also another conversation tomorrow about some, a grant that would be much smaller but still be a significant amount. So those would be opportunities, those two, and then we're looking for others as well. For me, the majority of this funding would have to be grants. That would be too big of a burden to put on the municipalities, obviously. So we wouldn't ask for that. We want to find ways to pay through this, through grants. The second option would be fundraising. And fundraising can be done in a variety of ways. If you look through some of the renderings, they even put in on certain walls where you, you know, this is the, you know, pick a business common space, right? Or whatever it is. So certainly naming rights for different rooms or different things would be a big thing. And then you can also do your general capital campaign things where, you know, you've got a bronze, you know, silver, gold, platinum sponsorship. You get your name on the wall, there's a placard, or those type of things. So those type of fundraising efforts as well. Because you have to think about with grants, there's probably always going to be a matching component, as you know, with any grant. And so we have to think about those components as well, even though we want to fund this mainly through grants, there's always going to be that matching component. So grants, fundraising, and then certainly if we need at any point governmental buy-in, we would come back and request that. But, so that's kind of where we are from a project perspective with this building assessment. We've got an idea now and a layout of what this looks like, which makes it easier for us to go out and try to sell this or try to make this a reality. Before, it was just the idea of an education center. Well, now we've got something physical, we can say, here's what we're doing. So that was kind of the point of all of that. Again, reaching out, finding those funding sources will be the next step. Present to all of the municipalities, make sure everybody's aware because this is an Adams County project and even beyond that. It can't be a Decatur project or a Burn project. It's got to be Adams County and beyond. So making sure we have the buy-in from them, continuing our fundraising efforts, and then continue to develop the uses for the facility, not only lease space. The daycare is a big piece we're working on right now. I will, I guess shouldn't have mentioned, we're working with Pathfinder out of Huntington on the daycare piece. They're one of our partners. They submitted a $500-plus thousand grant a few weeks ago for some of that piece. So that would be a big get for us. We should know in March whether that's funded or not. So we do have those opportunities. We are moving forward. But then the educational piece as well, working with Ivy Tech to hopefully develop some trainings in the springtime. There's the possibility of some equipment coming our way from Ivy Tech, both from a machining perspective and an industrial maintenance perspective. So excited about those opportunities. But we are moving forward, and this building assessment really helps us kind of try to get to where we're going. So with that, I'll open up the floor. Wiley, Craig, if you have anything to comment, they are board members for the Merit Center. So certainly, if I missed anything, feel free to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Tim, do you think you have a lease agreement for the volleyball?
I have not seen one.
Is a lease agreement for the volleyball?
I don't know. I typically turn that over to...
I think it was started, but I don't think we have a lease agreement on it.
It was leaded, but maybe it would be...
I don't know that it's been signed.
I don't know that it actually has gotten to the Decatur force. I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, we can certainly get that for them. If there's a finished copy, that, if you, Phyllis or Tim, send me that, then I can get that to them to execute.
Is this something you would like, want to just do or like do it in phases?
We would definitely look, I mean, ideally, we would get all the money we need and do it all at once because that makes it much easier. Realistically, phasing it out is probably going to be what we have to do unless we can get some of those bigger grants that we've started to have conversations about. Yeah, phasing it out would probably be, I mean, the daycare piece is the biggest piece right now because we have some end users ready to go, some opportunity there. So that would be a big first, we'll say, phase. But then we can also phase out some of those other areas. You know, commercial kitchen, do you really need to do that right now? You know, that may be a later phase. The event center, I think you can generate revenue pretty quickly if you change that out, so that may be an earlier phase. So definitely phasing it out would be an option. Okay. Well, if you do have any questions come up or anything, reach out, let me know, and we'll try to answer.
I do just have an additional item for current needs. We currently need some custodial support because of the, of Bowen Center, Decatur Forest, and their, when the lease structure was created, custodial support was part of that in figuring. So I'm coming to, I guess, council tonight to ask that we be able to access that. We have, Colton has talked with the Drakes. Custodial service, they are willing to do that. They've given some price structure. They probably know the building better than anyone because John was the head custodial maintenance man for many years there, and Joyce was the evening custodian. But we do particularly the hallways around the gym and where the Bowen Center because of restrooms, and probably a couple of times a month wouldn't that...
So there, so the quote we got from the Drakes was for $40 an hour. Figuring that up, I think what is needed initially is a clean sweep of the whole building, of every classroom, just making sure that, you know, all things are taken care of because there's a lot of space out there. I think you do that, they have quoted 16 to 20 hours to do that, to do a clean sweep of the whole building. Now, on a regular basis, we wouldn't need them to do the whole building and parts of the building that aren't being utilized. It'd just be kind of the main entrance as you walk in, the area where the Bowen Center is currently leasing space and the gym is being utilized. I would think, and it's pure speculation on my point, two, three hours would be what it would take to clean that specific area. And I think you could do that on a, you know, every other week basis to start out with to see, you know, maybe you need it more than that, but starting there to see what that does for you, I think, makes sense. That's just kind of my, my two cents in what I've figured.
We've committed to the building. We've got tenants. We need to keep it clean, the areas that are being used.
Yeah, I will say, Craig forwarded me a contact today of somebody else who would potentially like to give a quote on janitor services for that building. It looked like from the card they were out of Fort Wayne. So we can always do that. I haven't contacted them yet because I just received that today, but that's an option as well, to receive a quote from them for their services and then compare that to the Drakes quote. But we need to do something soon because of the current tenants and the volleyball utilizing the facility.
How is it cleaned now?
It's not...
So with the winter, it's probably a mess.
Yeah. And I will say, even, you know, not to...
Right now, the entrance looks pretty poor.
Yeah. Leaves blow in pretty easily through the main entrance, so there are a lot of leaves everywhere. I went and utilized EDC funds at one point to buy some bathroom trash cans for the drive-through job driven because we didn't have any. So it, I would say it's not, and it's certainly needed.
What do we think on the second quote? Necessary?
Doesn't matter to me. I just sent it to him today because somebody came up and handed me a card and said I could have the opportunity to quote on it. But I think we need to do something pretty quick. If we can round that up, I'd make a... I guess I would make a request that we go ahead and grant permission that we use those necessary funds and then let Colton determine...
Which?
The best direction to go.
And make that a motion?
I second that. We need to make it look nice, people count.
So we have a motion, a second, to take the second quote and let Colton settle on that and go forward with some cleaning.
Sounds fine.
On paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
If you could, let me know what that total amount is that's been set aside for custodial. That'll help me determine maybe the hours or initially what I ask them to do if I know that total amount. But once I get that second quote and make a decision, we'll forward that on to the full council, just so that you're aware of what's been decided.
Colton, just one other thing.
Yeah.
On top of economic development in general, I've had two different major employers say that one issue they seem to have is in retracting employees is there's nowhere for them to live. There's no apartments. Like, if you want to rent an apartment in Decatur, there are no apartments to rent.
Right.
Strategically, what we can do from the city, the county, the economic development to get a, I know Bluffton just announced a major high-end apartment.
Yeah.
Complex coming in.
In 2017, there was a housing assessment done in partnership with Wells County. Wells County and Adams County did a combined effort on that. And unfortunately, that plan's just sat for us, where you can see Wells County took some action on it. So I think one of the things we identified as a board was reassessing that. I think it's important because now it's four years old and making sure that those data points remain the same. You know, what it says we can, from a capacity standpoint, do remains. So that's something that we're going to do here in 2021, is reassess that and then not allow it to set and push that forward and identify what different types of developments we could possibly bring in from a, is it residential subdivision or is it apartment or both? So certainly that's something that's on our mind because it's a big issue. It's the chicken before the egg thing, right, with workforce? We need people, but we need houses for those people, you know, and we kind of just have to take the chicken and the egg at the same time and make it happen.
Well, along that line, I think our, the county sewer district that's working is really helping us to prepare us some fringe areas for future development to make it more enticing for developers, if there's some of that infrastructure already in place.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Colton.
Thanks, Colton.
Yep. Kurt? Let's Kurt out.
It's a company that helps take care of neglected buildings.
All right. Two weeks ago tonight, I sent everybody emails with the PowerPoint presentation, the basically a general ordinance, and then also the list of the communities that ProChamps works with in the state of Indiana. I've read through this, just so we're clear on a couple of things. This will have to do with vacant properties that has buildings, both residential and commercial, and we can also implement it for totally vacant lots that have had issues with like weeds, vegetation, that we've still had to keep going after for abatement orders. We can pretty much mold this ordinance however we see fit. We can mold it to the point where if we have to start, say, finding owners, property owners, that ProChamps will come in and enforce that. We don't have to do anything. It's totally how we write this up. So I guess tonight, has everybody had a chance to review?
Yep. I want to follow your recommendation. I mean, you're the one, your department's been burdened. I mean, that's your job, but it's become a big job.
We're still going to have, we're still going to have trash and debris that we have to deal with from normal property owners, people who are, who are living or occupying or using buildings, commercial use or whatever. We're still going to have that on our end. ProChamps won't have anything to do with this. Basically, what they're going to do is they will keep on track of every property in the city of Decatur on a daily basis, and they will start looking for potential foreclosures, or they'll start looking for properties that might be going into foreclosure, or vacant homes or buildings that are starting to dilapidate. And they will basically make the owners, it's really going to do one of three things, if not all three things at the same time, force the owners or the mortgage holders to maintain properties, because according to the ordinance, they have to do, on a vacant property, they have to do an inspection every 30 days, and they have to report to ProChamps. It could force owners and mortgage holders to make sure these properties are occupied, rented out to tenants, or functional. And the third thing is it could force an owner or a mortgage holder to sell the property to somebody who will do something for it, because they're not going to want to pay the fee every six months. It's going to start costing them money. So I guess what I need to know from you is, are you willing to go forward with this?
I guess one question I got on it is, what happens to the guy that has a vacant property that mows his yard up, keeps that house all the time? Does he then have to pay a $30 fee every six months? Or how do you determine, like, or like you said with a vacant lot? If someone owns a vacant lot, and they mow that vacant lot, why, we don't want to have to make them register if they do...
Well, we don't have to include the vacant lots into the ordinance. I mean, I'm going to end up dealing with the vacant lots one way or the other. If the owner is maintaining that property, he's got nothing to worry about.
Do they have to register, like, on a...
That's totally up to how you guys want to handle it. In my opinion, if it's a commercial property right next to his house, I would say no. If it's a vacant property next to a commercial property and they maintain it, I would say no. But at some point in time, if that homeowner or that business owner starts to fall delinquent by not paying his water bill, not paying his utilities, he's got a mortgage holder and he's not making his payments, then ProChamps is going to come in and start, they're going to start their paperwork.
Have you talked to any of the other cities that are using them?
No, I have not. I have no contacts for any of these cities. Tim Cox is a gentleman that I'm working with from ProChamps, and he said that he's willing to do a Zoom meeting in here at whatever date you guys specify, to actually go through the PowerPoint presentation and answer any questions.
So there's no cost really to the city?
No. If anything, the city could make a little bit of money. For instance, let's say, we agreed to set whatever the fee is going to be. That fee could be as minimum of $200 every six months, it can be $500 every six months. Regardless, let's say it's $200. $100 of that goes to ProChamps. The other $100 goes to us. But, and it specifies in here, it does have to go into a special, be deposited to a special account in the city Decatur's department dedicated to the cost of the implementation and enforcement of this ordinance. My question was, how long does that money sit in that account? Where does it go after a certain period of time?
So it would probably just be non-reverting.
Yeah.
Just in that fund.
Okay. So it just says, the only thing it specifies in here is it cannot be utilized for the legal defense of foreclosure action.
I think it's a great idea to clean up. I just would, and I don't know if you can word it that way in the ordinance, but I don't want to start charging some guy that's been taking care of a vacant house for the last five years, cap it up, and then come in and say, okay, now you owe us $200 every three months because your house is vacant. Maybe there's not even any of them out there, but I just wouldn't want to put that burden on somebody that's taking care of their property.
Well, you know as well as I do, though, if a house is vacant too long, it starts to dilapidate.
Right.
A house is a living, breathing structure with people in it, without people in it, it starts going bad. You're not using the water every day, if you're not using the heat or the HVAC every day. You don't have the normal movement of people in and out of the house. It starts to deteriorate. And that's what their whole thing is, is to keep that building from deteriorating.
Or push them to get someone to rent it or sell it.
Exactly.
I think if they're willing to make a presentation for us, then, you know, that can answer questions directly for the council.
And that's what I asked him. I said, look, you're putting me in the middle as a metal man here. You know, I'm doing as much homework on this as I can, and every day that I've dealt with this since, you know, I learned something new.
Wiley, and I sat through the presentation at Kurt's office, and it's actually pretty fresh air.
It is.
I recommend you're watching the presentation or listening.
And I can probably try to get a hold of some of those cities and see how the relationships are and how it's going so far between now and that next presentation.
I mean, there was an extreme example, well, a week or two ago in Fort Wayne with a house fire.
Yeah.
That, you know, it was reported out that they had been reported many, many times, and they cleaned up the yard, and then the next thing, it was all in the house, it was basically a hoarders, and they had a terrible time putting the fire out, and, you know, we don't, I'm not saying we're going to have that, but we do have the potential.
We have the potential. There's several houses, several buildings around town that definitely have that potential.
What if you start the program and you decide that it was a horrible idea? How do you get out of the deal?
That's a question you need to ask them in the Zoom meeting at the next meeting.
If you're going to set up an ordinance, you'd have to revise the ordinance.
Yeah, you'd have to revise the ordinance, for sure. Because this will be an adopted ordinance, this will be an ordinance that we adopted.
Set up all the fees.
Yeah. Let's hear their presentations.
Yeah, you can check up on those cities if you have some contact, but nice to know. I mean, they're going to use them.
Right. No, I agree. Okay. Do we have a motion for that, or just have the presentation?
Do you want to set up times for presentations?
Basically, what we would do is set up time for the next council meeting.
You want to do it in the council meeting?
Yeah, I had told Tim that's probably what would happen if we moved forward with it. It'd be the next council meeting. I gave him a February 2 date.
Any other questions for Kurt?
Actually, thinking about your question, as long as it's a property owner and he's not in foreclosure, they won't have to register.
So basically, it's anything that goes into foreclosure or...
So if it's a vacant lot, and there's no building on it, and he's not in foreclosure, and he's maintaining, he won't have to register. But if there is a building on it that's vacant, then he will have to register.
You mean like a commercial building?
Or residential. Even if it's a house, there are several of those around town, where they're just sitting empty and nothing's being done, or a lot of the abatement orders that we sent out last year were vacant homes. They're going in, they're not doing anything with them. You have to keep hitting on them. So if it's a vacant lot, and it's maintained, and he's not behind on his mortgage, not going into foreclosure, he shouldn't have to register.
So what happens if it's vacant and he gets, he has to register to start paying, but he brings in renters and it's being up kept?
Then as long as he's got a renter in there, he shouldn't have to register again in six months.
Okay.
But if it goes vacant in two years, then he's got to register.
Okay.
Yeah, but back to your first point, if a house sits for two years, it's going to start to turn and jump. It'd be a problem.
Well, if he's got a tenant for two years, and then they up and move, and it's vacant, then he has to register. The whole idea of this ordinance is to keep people in buildings, get people in buildings and keep them maintained. That's what the whole purpose of it is.
And that I like.
All right, we'll set that up, and I'll try to make some phone calls.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, that's our agenda, right?
No.
Okay. On the head, Lenny?
Nothing.
Kevin?
I'm good.
State?
Nothing.
Bill?
Good.
Kurt?
Good.
Donnie?
Uh, you'll see, continuing, sure, there's your one in town on the North Street.
Good.
Going away, Andy.
All right. Karen?
Good.
Les?
Good.
Jimmy?
Hold my hand.
All right. So we can ask, Andy, you have any?
No.
Counsel, anybody from counsel?
I worked on East and North Pennants coming along nicely, so, good deal. I tentatively set up, you hang on a second, I'm sorry. I tentatively set up February 8th for a noon, 11:30 opening at the Riverside Center. I made a temporary reservation for State of the City address. Dan, being the guest speaker, I'll work on food and stuff like that tomorrow, so if you can be there, great, clear your counter.
Okay.
We didn't get to do much of those luncheons last year because of the COVID, and they won't allow us back over in...
Woodcrest.
Nursing home at Woodcrest. So we're going to do this at Riverside Center. I talked with them over there. It'd be the one, the west room, not it, because there's a blood drive or something going on in the big room that day. So I've worked it out with Ryan, got it on the schedule for January 8th. I'll try to get that...
February...
Or, excuse me, February 8th.
Okay. Anybody else? Paul? Tim?
I can't make talk about the solace. Nothing.
I'm always up for waiting. Hey, wait for the public. Yeah.
Oh, you've got to make your...
Oh, yes, we do.
Not a record.
Yeah. I have, was it BZA?
Yeah.
Appointed Kevin McIntyre to the BZA.
And that's for a four-year term. And then reappointed...
Reappointed, um, Joan Seefring to the Parks Board, and Dick Stimson to the Park Board.
Kevin McIntyre's on BZA?
BZA.
Four-year?
Yes.
And then Joan Seefring and Dick Stimson is...
Parks.
Four. Uh, she has this one that's three.
Is it Parks?
Dick Stimson, three years, and Joan's is four.
Seefring's three years, that's Parks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay.
And then who was the other one?
I don't remember what they were, year-wise. And then...
I'm sorry.
Kevin McIntyre, Carol and Seefring, who's the other one?
No, it's Joan Seefring.
Joan Seefring and Dick Stimson.
Dick Stimson.
And they're on the Park Board, Decatur Park Board.
I have another BZA one, but it's not...
How long is Dick Stimson on for?
Uh, four years.
Okay.
I think, well, no, she has a type three, so I'll have to double-check on that, but it says three. I don't know if they stagger them. Jeremy, do you know?
Can you set a shame?
He hasn't come to...
Are they staggered?
I think he's coming tomorrow or Thursday.
It is three. Then Craig changed.
Three years?
Probably.
Probably's got the other BZA.
The other BZA, and he'll come tomorrow or Thursday to sign the papers.
We'll prove him next time.
Yeah.
Well, make those three a matter of record.
Yeah. Can we do them all three at the same time?
Yeah.
Make that a matter of record.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay.
Wiley?
Motion to pay the claim? I'll be a motion to pay the claim.
Yeah.
Second.
Total amount up there.
Motion from Wiley?
Second.
Second from Matt, pay the claim, it's all in favor?
Aye. And a motion to adjourn.
Pose the same sign. Motion to adjourn from Matt?
Second.
Second from Tyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same sign.